Meeting come to order, please. Roll call. If you'll press your present button, please. If you're here. You ready? Well?
Hit the arrow button. Okay. There you go.
Ah, it's not doing anything. Wow. Okay, get my hammer. Is anybody getting any response? Okay. Then they'll try again. Put a battery in it. Wow.
All right, what's up? I don't know.
Can we do manual roll call? We're gonna proceed with a manual roll call. Jack's here. Don's here. Susan's here. Tommy's here. I'm here. Are you here? Hey, John's here. Write it down. Announcement, staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of announcements. First of all, there is a revised version containing all the amendments to new zoning ordinance that is online right now. So if y'all want to take a look at it, likely, likely, we'll be having our first endeavors with that since, since the agenda closes for January prior to January 1st. We'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to wait to the February meeting to take it out for a test drive in all likelihood, so. Second announcement is Katie has with her a number of DVDs for our ongoing efforts toward continuing education. You're welcome to, welcome to check them out. I'm sure they are, they're all, each and every one of them quite scintillating. But other than that, that's all the announcements I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes of October 11th, 2012. Any corrections? Excuse me, September 13th. I got that wrong. Motion made and seated. We're gonna try to, are they? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Openness, none? Consent agenda, items three through eight. Anyone on the commission wishing to pull one of those for separate consideration, please say so now. Otherwise, we'll take it as a whole. Anyone? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start off with item three, Brins Valley Addition, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months. Item four, King's Chapel, Section Two B, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months with a review in three months and that proper certifications be submitted by the developer before the next review. Item five, King's Chapel, Section Two C, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $8,213. Recommendation, release the bond. Item six, Pet Vet, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $3,300. Recommendation, release the bond. Item seven, Stags Leap, Section One, Performance Bond for Off-Site Roads, Drainage and erosion Control, $35,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months with a review in three months and that proper certifications be submitted by the developer before next review. And item eight, Watkins Creek, Section Three, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $33,301. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of one year with review at the February 2013 meeting.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, consent, your motion? Motion made and seated. Any further discussion? We giving up on voting tonight? I agree. Okay, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, agenda item nine, Amendment to the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding the Establishment of the Leapers Fork Zoning District. For those of you in the audience, and you're the only one, oh, hey, we just doubled it and we tripled it. For those of you in the audience, this is your opportunity to make a comment. If you would like to do so, you're invited to come to the podium and give us your name and address. We are now open for a public hearing. Staff?
In October of 2011, the Williamson County Regional Planning Commission adopted the Leapers Fork Village Special Area Plan, which created a long-term vision for the Leapers Fork Village based on extensive citizen participation. Since that time, planning department staff has been working with the Leapers Fork Citizens' Advisory Committee and the village community to develop a tailored zoning district that will apply only to the Leapers Fork Village and that will help to implement the vision articulated in the plan. The new Leapers Fork Village District will take the place of the generic Village District that is currently applied to the village. The proposed text amendment includes the following revisions to the zoning ordinance. One, revised Table 1.07-1, Translation to New Zoning Districts, to remove the future designation for the Leapers Fork Village District. Two, revised Section 10.02P, Leapers Fork Village District, formerly a placeholder, to include the standards as outlined in Attachment 9.9-1, excuse me. Three, revise the following tables within Article 10 to include the Leapers Fork Village Core Subarea and General Subarea. A, Table 10.06-1, Summary Table of Dimensional Standards. B, Table 10.06-2, Summary Table of Minimum Setbacks. And C, Table 10.06-3, Summary Table of Minimum Lot widths. Four, revised Table 11.01-1, Table of Allowed Uses, to include the uses permitted within the Leapers Fork Village District. Five, revised Table 11.04-1, Permitted Accessory Uses and Structures, to include the accessory uses permitted within the Leapers Fork Village District. And six, revised Table 11.05-1, Permitted Temporary Uses and Structures, to include the temporary uses permitted within the Leapers Fork Village District. In addition to the changes outlined above, the proposed map amendment reflects the transition of the generic Village Zoning District to the Leapers Fork Village District. The proposed amendments were presented to the Leapers Fork Community on July 31st and have since been posted on the county's website. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text and map amendments and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption. One additional note, Mr. Chairman, the resolutions attached to this and the following two items have been amended to reflect the revised date for the November County Commission meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions of staff? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the committee, I was, you know, a non-voting member of the committee, and we feel very confident that this is a good plan for Leapers Fork. The staff worked really hard on it. And, you know, for us to have the kind of, I guess, commerce of what you could say in Leapers Fork, that this is really gonna serve our community well.
Thank you.
So, and thank you, staff, for all the work that y'all done on it.
Anyone else below me for a public hearing? Anyone in the audience wish to make a comment? Why did y'all come? Something else. I suspected that. Any comments from the commission? Any thoughts? Motion?
Chair, move for approval. We'll recommend that, staff.
Motion made and seated. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 10, Continuing the Public Hearings, Amendment to the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Vacation Rental Homes. Staff?
In the summer of 2012, Williamson County planning staff met with the Leapers Fork Community to review the proposed development standards for the Leapers Fork Village. During that time, it was brought to the attention of staff that the Williamson County zoning ordinance does not address the issue of a dwelling as a vacation rental home. Upon further evaluation, staff concluded that while the zoning ordinance specifically identifies hotels and bed and breakfast establishments under the visitor accommodations use category, neither of these types, neither of these use types adequately describe the short-term rental of an entire dwelling. Further, staff concluded that such a use is appropriate within the Leapers Fork Village. The attached amendment addresses the issue in the following manner. One, updates are made to Article 11 as follows. A, Table 11.01-1 includes vacation rental home as a new use type within the visitor accommodations use category under the commercial use classification and specifies that this use type is permitted as a special use within the Leapers Fork Village zoning district. And B, a new section, 11.03D19, outlines specific standards for vacation rental homes. Two, Table 17.06-1, Minimum Off-Street Parking Standards, is revised to include parking standards for vacation rental homes. Three, Article 23, Definitions, is revised to include a definition for a vacation rental home. The proposed amendment does not replace the established use types of hotel or bed and breakfast. In drafting this amendment, staff sought to clarify, for purposes of the zoning ordinance, the differences between the various types of visitor accommodations. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Not this one. Questions of staff? Uh, Don?
I'm a little confused on this. Maybe somebody can clarify this. How, how does this differ from any rental home, a single family? This is just, we're talking about a single-family home, I take it?
That's correct.
Why we have to have something for a rental and, if they're saying it's for a vacation home or just a rental, it's a single-family home?
The distinction, Commissioner Crowhan, is the duration of the rental. If, if, if you will ever rent your home for less than 30 days, it falls into this category under the lodging use category. However, if you're, if you're renting it always for a period of 30 days or more, then it's just a single-family home that you happen to rent and the county's not involved at all.
So the stipulate, one of the stipulations will be that it has to be for less than 30 days rental? Is that for each individual rental, or?
That's in the definition where it specifies that this would be for rentals less than 30 days. So the way that would work is that if, if, if a homeowner would ever rent the dwelling for less than 30 days at a time, then they would have to come in and get approval as a vacation rental home. That, that wouldn't preclude them from, from time to time renting it for a whole month or for six weeks or something like that. But if, 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 if they know that they're gonna rent it for less than 30 days, at least from time to time, then they would fall under this category.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions? Holly?
We just kinda had some concerns, I guess, trying to out-in Leapers Fork, as far as some of the, you know, folks out there that do use their homes as vacation rentals and I guess might kinda help clarify it for me, that they have to go through site planning approval, which part of that is going through the Department of Sewage, which, you know, we all were, you know, well know, you know, the issues that Leapers Fork has with, you know, sewage and septic. And I guess one thing I just wanted to clarify, that this wouldn't preclude a homeowner, I guess if they wanted to turn their home into a vacation rental and they failed the, I guess the septic, their septic, you know, failed, that it wouldn't preclude them from using still as a single-family unit, but they could not use it as a vacation rental. Is that right, Mike? Until they had their septic fixed?
I believe in either case. The septic would have to be fixed.
If they had a failing system?
If they had a failing system, yeah, it'd have to be fixed. I mean, that's...
I mean, that's the health department. Counsel?
If the system's in failure, they would be required to correct it and they couldn't operate it as a single, as a vacation rental home as long as that failure's out there. Now, we obviously work with people while they're living in their homes to correct failures.
Okay, right.
We're not habit of kicking people out of their houses. But as far as new approvals, that would, that would potentially increase the use. Or some of the reasons the vacation rental home goes through this process is because we want it to only be used as a vacation rental home because the system is sized
Right.
for a single-family dwelling. But if it's in failure, it's, it's gotta be fixed.
Okay, okay. And that's, and that's, you know, just as far as it could be still used as a single-family, you know, dwelling, but it still has to go through...
Unless it's a severe health hazard, I'm not aware that we've ever evicted anyone from their home because of that. We, we try and work with people, so even if they have to do a temporary pump and haul while they're working out a longer-term fix, the Board of Health generally works with folks so they can stay in their homes.
Other questions, comments? Your motion? Jack?
Don, this is just strictly for the Leapers Fork area, or is this county-wide?
Yeah. Specifically the village.
Okay.
Leapers Fork Village, period. Any other comments or questions? Their second?
Second.
Motion made and seated. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 11, Amendment to 2013 Official Zoning Map to Correct Mapping Error at 2204 Hillsborough Road. Staff?
In 1989, the County Commission rezoned the property in question from neighborhood conservation to suburban to allow Harpeth School of Gymnastics to utilize the property. At that time, the official zoning map adopted in 1988 was not changed to reflect the County Commission's action, and since that time, the official zoning map has improperly shown the property in question is carrying the NC zoning designation. On May 14th, 2012, the County Commission adopted the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance and official zoning map effective January 1st, 2013. Unaware of the previous mapping error, staff inadvertently carry forward the mistake when preparing the new official zoning map. As a result, the property in question was incorrectly zoned neighborhood conservation on the 2013 official zoning map. Property in question should have been zoned village, which follows the established zoning translation of the current suburban district to the new village district in the Grassland area. As this rezoning was the direct result of a mapping error and the mislabeled zoning designation of the current official zoning map, staff recommends the rezoning of this property from neighborhood conservation to village and that the 2013 official zoning map effective January 1st, 2013 be revised to reflect this change. Staff also recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption. The property owner has been notified in person and in writing of said mapping error and is in agreement with this corrective action.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Public hearing? Is this it? Come on up. Give us your name and address. We'll talk to you.
I'm Kelly Timpenney from 114 General JB Hood Drive.
Yes, sir.
They're my, across-the-creek neighbor. Does this do anything to what they can do on the property as far as can they sell it and make a McDonald's out of it or anything like that?
Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this would determine, I don't have the 2013 zoning ordinance in front of me, what would be the list of permitted uses within the village district and then the translation when the new Grassland Village District is, is created. So it would determine on what uses were permitted in that zoning district.
Do you want me to interpret that?
Yes. You don't know.
No. Grassland is designated a village, okay?
Yeah.
What that means is, and what you've heard tonight is some of the discussion regarding Leapers Fork as a village, they will be prepared with the input of folks like yourself who live in that area, a new plan applicable to that area only, specific to the village district. It will take your input, come back to the staff, staff will draft documents to accomplish what you say you want it to be, then they'll be adopted. And that's what we're doing tonight at Leapers Fork, okay?
Right.
So the answer to your question will happen during that evolution, in my judgment.
And when does that take place?
What I answered for you tonight could be wrong because it's got potential to change. So participate in that. Go to those public hearings, be a part of it.
When, when will that be happening?
Staff, when's, when's Grassland gonna take off? Do you have a plan for that yet?
Well, we're about to start that, we've already started the background information and, and work, and so the public portion of that process will begin this fall and occur over the winter and spring.
Where's that list I just had of the members? Come here. This the people gonna be on that committee?
I have that.
You betcha. It was hers, but I gave it to you anyway.
Right now, Grassland, it would be generic, the, and those are the uses that would be allowed in Grassland, but then, once we do that particular, much of that particular study, then some of those uses could drop out, some other uses could come in and like that. But that's generic village, so you take a look at that and you have any call, questions, calls?
My suggestion and my answer to your question is get involved. You're involved tonight, stay involved. All right?
Very good.
Was that what y'all were here for?
Yes.
You need to, you need to make a comment? You're invited to do so. Come on. It's still open.
Just a question.
Okay.
I think I know the answer, but just to clarify, this is not changing the zoning, this is correcting a map for zoning that was changed some time ago.
It, it's a mapping error.
Okay.
It is trying to get the plan consistent with what it really is. That's all this is tonight.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Wesley Bulla. I'm at 108 General JB Hood Drive. I'm the next-door neighbor of the, our property butts up against each other.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I assume the young lady's with you? All right. Congratulations. Any other comments? We'll close the public hearing at this time, since all of our participants are gonna leave. Is there a motion? Motion made and seated. Any further discussion? Go for it, Jack.
Wait, wait, I'm looking at this. I assume on lot 027, the B00100 is Harpeth School Gymnastics? Is, is that the lot?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so, but now, that was zoned, well, it was zoned, if I can read...
It was in CC. Yes, sir.
And, and so now with the new plan, with the new plan update, we're, we're just gonna zone that one lot and the rest of it's still...
That is correct, yes, sir. We're just rezoning this one property to village. When the zoning map was adopted, it was inadvertently rezoned to NC, which was an error.
Okay.
So it's just this one single property.
But I, we're not changing properties north of that?
No, sir, we are not.
All right.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion? I had a motion, didn't I? Did I have a second? I'm losing, I'm losing it, guys and girls. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you reiterating. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 12, endorsement of the Grassland Citizens Advisory Committee, and I just gave it away. Thank you. Okay, any, I got one question. I know Mike Franks, and he lives in Columbia.
Property, and that's how he's identified, yeah.
That's Hocky Dory?
Yeah.
All right, I'm just curious. Mike's a friend. I just wondering how that happened. All right, any questions? Anybody you wanna? Blackbone? Oh, I'm sorry.
If we're good without it, would you like me to read it?
Yeah, I guess so, Katie. The director says yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Absolutely, sir. Based on direction from this body, staff will be embarking on the Grassland Village Special Area Plan process this fall. As was the case with the previous special area plans, public participation will be a major point of emphasis in the plan's development. In order to maximize the public's involvement throughout the development of the special area plan, the planning department has been seeking members of the Grassland community to serve on a citizens advisory committee. The advisory committee will have approximately nine members of the public, which will include a mix of residents, business owners, civic leaders, and other stakeholders from the village. The role of the citizens advisory committee will be to serve as a sounding board for various planning ideas and concepts, act as a liaison between the public and staff, work with staff on making recommendations for the special area plan, and provide input that will help ensure the community's vision, goals, and objectives are properly articulated in the plan. Since the August Planning Commission meeting, staff initiated an outreach campaign aimed at providing information regarding the advisory committee through various means of communication, including postcards and websites. In response to that effort, a number of people have expressed a desire to serve on the committee. The attached list comprises staff's recommendation regarding the makeup of the citizens advisory committee and reflects an effort to create an efficient, workable committee while ensuring a broad and appropriate mix of stakeholder representation. Your endorsement of the makeup of this committee is requested.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Questions? I have a question about this Walton guy that's ex-officio. I think ex-officio allows you to vote, Jack.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments? Questions? Motion? Y'all are awful quiet tonight, or I'm going deaf. We have a motion in a second, apparently. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Set out of your ring, John. The motion carries. Any other business? Yeah. Any other business? We're outta here. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Second.